Being a prayerful attitude. As we are going to start our two to three days of special meetings, let's pray that God's presence and His glory will be revealed in our midst. Let's all surrender our hearts in the presence of the Lord. Let's pray, "God, help me to understand Your ways." As we all know, we are going to meditate and think on the theme of the worldviews in these days. And we have Pastor Billy Anger with us. Let's pray that God's grace will be poured upon us so that we will be able to receive from the Lord what the Lord has in store for us. Why don't we all take few moments, just open up our mouth and just thank God and praise Him. Hallelujah. Because He alone is worthy. He alone is worthy. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. We give You honor and glory, Lord. We pray that the young minds will be open tonight to receive Your Word. The old hearts will be open tonight to receive Your Word, O God. We pray that through everything which happens here, Your name will be glorified. We pray that, Lord, You will guide us, lead us, help us tonight. We surrender everything into Thy mighty hands. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful to You for this evening. Lord, this is the day that You have made. We will rejoice and we will be glad in it. Lord, after a hectic week for many people, Lord, You have helped us to gather together on this weekend in Your presence to receive from You. Lord, we pray that as we are in Your presence, help that our hearts will not wander off into different directions. Rather, like Mary, we will sit in Your presence and we will receive from You what You have in store for us. We pray, Lord, that You will speak to us and help us, Lord, so that we will be able to comprehend Your plans and Your purposes, Your word. In a times like this, help us to really acknowledge who You are. We thank You, Lord, for that. We pray for everyone who is in the sanctuary. If there are people who are still traveling to join us, bring them safely, Lord. We pray for people who are going to watch this service online through different online platforms. We pray that it will be a blessing. We don't need any name or fame or glory, but we give all those to You, Lord, because that rightfully belongs to You. We are Your servants. Our master and Lord, use us. Thank you for Your servant who is with us. Use him in a powerful way. Thank you, Lord. Give the clarity of thought so that we will be able to understand Your word in clear terms. We thank You. Submitting everything into Thy mighty hands, from the beginning till the end, be with us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Those who can stand up, please stand up in God's presence. We're going to sing a few songs and we are going to just glorify the name of the Lord. Before that, can we all just take a moment to just thank the Lord? When I prayed, I said something, you know, maybe you had a hectic week. Maybe you had a hectic day from which you just came over. But always remember, there is no lack of supplies in the presence of God. Amen? And if there is a place where we can truly rejoice, it is the presence of our Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Jesus. We praise You, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. If we can clap our hands, let's clap our hands. Let us rejoice and let us praise God this evening. This is the day, this is the day that the Lord has made. That the Lord has made. We will rejoice, we will rejoice. Happy, glad, and happy. This is the day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. This is the day, this is the day that the Lord has made. Once again, this is the day. This is the day, this is the day that the Lord has made. That the Lord has made. We will rejoice, we will rejoice. Happy, glad, and happy. This is the day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. This is the day, this is the day that the Lord has made. Hosanna, Hosanna, Hosanna in the highest. Hosanna, Hosanna, Hosanna in the highest. Lord, we lift up Your name. With our hearts full of praise. Be exalted, oh Lord thy God. Hosanna in the highest. Glory, glory, glory to the King of kings. Glory, glory, glory to the King of kings. Lord, we lift up Your name. With our hearts full of praise. Be exalted, oh Lord thy God. Glory to the King of kings. Hosanna, Hosanna, Hosanna in the highest. Hosanna, Hosanna, Hosanna in the highest. Lord, we lift up Your name. With our hearts full of praise. Be exalted, oh Lord thy God. Hosanna in the highest. Glory, glory, glory to the King of kings. Glory, glory, glory to the King of kings. Lord, we lift up Your name. With our hearts full of praise. Be exalted, oh Lord thy God. Glory to the King of kings. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. We give You honor and glory, Lord, because it rightfully belongs to You, Jesus. We praise You, Jesus. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. As we have gathered here, can we give a clap offering unto our Lord this evening? Hallelujah. We worship You, Jesus. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Come, thou form, every blessing. To my heart to sing Thy praise. Strings of mercy never cease. God, the songs of love is praise. Teach me some melodious song. Sung by flaming dancer-bone. Praise the mountain, fix the bough. Mount of thy redeeming love. Praise the mountain, fix the bough. Mount of thy redeeming love. Dear one raised high, heaven's angel. Flee there by thy love, thy crown. And thy hope, thy good pleasure. Safely to our right and door. Jesus sought me when a stranger. Panguing from the fold of thorn. Here to rescue me from danger. In the post this precious bough. Here to rescue me from danger. In the post this precious bough. Oh, to bring some greater danger. Baby, I'm a strange to be. But thy goodness, like a feather. Find thy wandering heart to be. Poured to wonder, Lord, I feel. Poured to labor, God, I love. Here's my heart, take and seal it. Seal it for thy cause, the bough. Here's my heart, take and seal it. Seal it for thy cause, the bough. Come, thou form, every blessing. To my heart to sing Thy praise. Strings of mercy never cease. God, the songs of love is praise. Teach me some melodious song. Sung by flaming dancer-bone. Praise the mountain, fix the bough. Mount of thy redeeming love. Praise the mountain, fix the bough. Mount of thy redeeming love. Praise the mountain, fix the bough. Mount of thy redeeming love. We bless Your name, oh Lord. We bless Your name. Hallelujah. We praise Your name, oh Lord. We worship You, Jesus. We thank You, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Bless the Lord, my soul, oh my soul. Worship this holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I worship your holy name. The sun comes up, it's a new day dawning. It's time to sing your song again. Whatever may pass and whatever lies before me. Let me be singing when the evening comes. Bless the Lord, my soul, oh my soul. Worship this holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I worship your holy name. Your nation loved and your slope true and pure. Your name is great and your heart is sound. For all your goodness I will keep on singing. Ten thousand years and stole my heart to find. Bless the Lord, my soul, oh my soul. Worship your holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I worship your holy name. And on that day when my strength is failing. The end draws near and my time has come. Still my soul will sing your praise unending. Ten thousand years and then forevermore. Bless the Lord, my soul, oh my soul. Worship your holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I worship your holy name. Bless the Lord, my soul, oh my soul. Worship your holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I worship your holy name. I worship your holy name. I worship your holy name. Christ is enough for me. Christ is enough for me. Everything I need is in You. Everything I need. Christ is my home and all. My joy and peace that we share. When the storm will never fail. Heaven is our home. Through every storm, my soul will sing. Jesus is there to guard me and glory. God is enough for me. Christ is enough for me. Everything I need is in You. Everything I need. Christ is my reward. Follow Jesus, no turning back. No turning back. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back. The cross before me, no world behind me. No turning back, no turning back. The cross before me, no world behind me. No turning back, no turning back. Christ is enough for me. Christ is enough for me. Everything I need is in You. Everything I need. Christ is my reward. All of my devotion. Now there's nothing in this world that ever satisfies. Through every trial, my soul will sleep. No turning back, I'll be set free. Christ is enough for me. Christ is enough for me. Everything I need is in You. Everything I need. I have decided. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back. The cross before me, no world behind me. No turning back, no turning back. The cross before me, no world behind me. No turning back, no turning back. Once again. Christ is enough for me. Christ is enough for me. Everything I need is in You. Everything I need. Christ is enough for me. Christ is enough for me. Everything I need is in You. Everything I need. Let's take a moment to say to the Lord, Lord, when trials comes, when painful situation comes, when sickness comes, whatever may come, Lord, I have followed You and I'm not going to turn back from it, Lord. I have decided to follow Jesus, no turning back. This evening, people of God, as we are in the presence of the Lord, why don't we say that once again to our master and our Lord? That, "Lord, Jesus, I have decided to follow You. Give me the grace to stand strong. In the midst of all situations and circumstances, my heart will continue to sing that You are enough for me. You're enough for me, Lord. You're enough for us." Gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful. In the calmness of this evening, we once again reaffirm our decision and we say, "Lord, that we have decided to follow You. Help us to be strong. In a world where there is lot of things happening, help us to have our anger in You. Help us to be stable and steadfast in our faith, in our trust. Help us to always continue, Lord, to pursue Your purposes and plans for our life. This evening, Lord, we pray that You will continue to speak to us. Guide us, lead us. Be with us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. You may be seated, please. Amen. How many of you are happy this evening? Yes. Christ is enough for us. In all circumstances, Jesus is enough for us. Amen? I'm so glad and happy that we have come to the first day of our special weekend meetings. And I can tell you that this is not planned exclusively by me, but I think it's in the plan of God. I believe that. And I pray that these weekend meetings will be a great blessing in everyone's life. Amen? Can we say an amen to the Lord? Hallelujah. I know some of you are a little nervous, tense, what's going to happen, but don't worry. We have Pastor Billy Anger with us. I think at this point I can tell that we are good friends now. And, but more than anything else, we are joined for one purpose, that is to expand the kingdom of God in this world. Amen? For those of you who don't know, he may say a few words, but I think for 14, 15 years, he, or many years, he was a traveling evangelist conducting revival meetings all around. He's an Assemblies of God minister ordained by the Assemblies of God. And then he pastored a church for many years. But now, I think he is focusing on a totally different, not different, but a little different type of ministry where he is, you know, especially focusing on the, in the field of apologetics and goes to campuses, does different type of ministries. And it's, it's going to be a blessing, I assure you. So let's not expect anything from Pastor Billy Anger. He's going to deliver what the Lord has given and entrusted to him. But let's expect from our Lord, because He's going to bless us. Amen? So without taking any more time, I'm going to hand over the time to him. He's going to speak to us and he's going to lead us. The Lord leads him and there will be Q and A time and all those things are going to happen. All those who are online too, we want to welcome you and pray that this evening's service will be a blessing in everyone's life. God bless you. Over to you, Pastor.
Good to be here tonight. I am so glad that when I put my socks on this morning, I didn't... I did not wear a pair of socks with a hole in them. I had no idea you took your shoes off in church. But I thought, well, I'll do, when in Rome, do like the Romans. And I took off my shoes, if that's okay. And I've never had the chance of speaking in the great state of Minnesota. And I asked Pastor this afternoon, I said, does Minnesota really have 10,000 lakes? He said, no, there are 11,000 lakes. And the ironic thing is I can't stand fishing. And fishing and hate hunting, they're just, you know, people love to go fishing and people love to go hunting. I went hunting one time, I was so bored. I had Blue Bubbleicious Bubble Gum. And I took my Blue Bubbleicious Bubble Gum out of my mouth and I was playing with my bubble gum while trying to hunt. That's how boring hunting is. And I know that it's good for the development of patience. Oh, I need to stay in frame, I guess. Do I need to stay in frame? I suppose I need to stay in frame. That could be a challenge for me. They'll manage, no problem. Anyway, so good to be here with you tonight. And this is sort of the theme of the work that we are endeavoring to accomplish. And the tomb was empty, but the mind should not be. And unfortunately, so frequently, we have the tendency to check our brains at the door when it comes to our service for Christ, especially those of us in Pentecostal and charismatic churches. And oftentimes, we focus more on an experience than we do intellect. But the Bible tells me that I am to worship with my heart, my soul, and with my mind. And so when the whole person worships, Christ has more to work with. And in my case, he needs, he needs as much as he can get because I'm lacking in so many different areas. All right, smile at me now. Pastor made me nervous when he said, you're nervous. So now I'm nervous because you're nervous because he said everybody is nervous. All right, here we go. The tomb was empty, your mind should not be. About five years ago, I received a phone call, not quite five years ago. I think it was in the latter portion of 2020. I'm explaining how it is that I ended up in the great state of Minnesota tonight because I believe the steps of a righteous man are established by God. Nothing accidental or happen chance. And so I received a phone call in the latter portion, portion, I think it was 2020. And there was a voice on the other end of the line that said, Pastor Billy. And she introduced herself. She said, do you do apologetics? And I said, well, yes, I do apologetics. How do you know that? And she mentioned one of the members in my church. He is an evangelist in the Assemblies of God. And he had gone to this particular church and preached. And so Sister Gigi asked my friend, do you know someone that does apologetics? And he said, yes, and gave Gigi my phone number. Now, if you don't mind, please, give me slide number five. And so if I am, if I'm a terrible speaker and bore you to tears this weekend, you've got this group in the upper left-hand corner to blame. This was my first contact with ICPF back in 2020. And we did several Zoom sessions back then. And then finally, we had the opportunity, once the COVID pandemic was subsided somewhat, to meet many of the students involved in this particular program there at the University of Texas in Arlington. And so once again, if this thing is a complete flop, blame them in the top left-hand corner. But if it's successful, come and pat me on the back. I need all the ego building that I can possibly get. All right. Why am I here? What is apologetics? I, for 17 years, 15 years, I'm sorry, for 15 years, I traveled. And much of the time, I lived out of a travel trailer. And I would just move from one particular church to the next church, week in and week out. As a matter of fact, one year, I preached 52 out of 52 weeks. And it wasn't uncommon to speak 250 to 270 services annually. And so in 25, 2005, I had, I had some kids that were coming of age and some boys that were coming of age. And so I decided that I would start pastoring so that I could be home with my children on a more consistent basis. It's an interesting thing, even though you can be in ministry, God may not specifically call you to a certain capacity of ministry. And the very Sunday, I stood in the pulpit and accepted the pastorate of that church. As I was standing in that pulpit, I said, what am I doing? Why am I doing this? I don't want to be here. And for the next 17 years, I was miserable in the pastoring. But I became comfortable. It was nice sleeping in my own bed every night. It was nice having my own foods and beverages in the refrigerator. It was nice living in my own home. But then in 2020, when that phone call came through, God just really interrupted my schedule. God has a way of bugging us when we're out of his will. And I'm glad that he does. Now, about the same time, I received this invitation. I noticed in any number of publications, if you don't mind, please, give me slide number eight. I was looking at the Barner Research Group. I was looking at Lifeway Publications. I was looking at Pew Research Council, as well as Ratio Christian. Each and every one of these research firms were saying the same thing. Slide number eight, nine for me, please, if you don't mind. And this is really what caught my attention, ladies and gentlemen. This is why I'm here tonight. When I saw this statistic, it wasn't just a matter of being sobered. It wasn't a matter of just being jarred, I was broken. Three out of every four self-identified Christians in this nation between the ages of 18 and 29. 18 through 29, three out of every four self-identified Christians will leave the Christian faith. And of the 75% that depart the church, only one of those three that left will at some time return. In other words, it is a net loss of 50%. We are losing half the next generation of Christianity in this nation. And something needs to change in order to stop the spiritual hemorrhaging. That is why I am here tonight. And so I've always had a great love for apologetics. And if you don't mind, please, once again, go back to slide number six. What is apologetics? It is very simply a reasoned defense, a thorough and thoughtful argument for why it is we believe something to be true. The word apologetics really does not originate in the church, but it goes back to 399 B.C., when a tiny little philosopher by the name of Socrates was on trial for his life. A man by the name of Miletus brought Socrates up on charges there in Athens, Greece. And he said in the indictment that Socrates was guilty of two specific crimes. The first crime was that Socrates did not have devotion nor loyalty to the gods of Athens. In other words, the indictment was impiety. And then the second charge brought against Socrates was that he was corrupting the morals of the youth there in Athens. And so he was brought to trial on February the 14th in 399 B.C. By Miletus, a man by the name of Antetus actually prosecuted Socrates. And interestingly enough, when Socrates stood up to give his defense or to give his apologetic, which we know about today because of a guy named Plato. Plato gave us the defense of Socrates. Socrates said sarcastically, the argument that Antetus gives is so convincing that I'm half inclined to believe that I'm guilty myself. And his sarcasm did not serve him real well. And there, he was tried before a jury of 501 of his peers. And of the 501, 281 found him guilty of those charges. Only 220 voted for quittal. And the next morning, Socrates drank a cup of poisoned hemlock and his life was expired. But that's where the word apologetic comes from. It means a defense. And that is what I do today. I am traveling from college campus to college campus. I just came from the University of South Carolina. I just came from Clemson University as well. And my goal is to speak to this generation of 18 through 29-year-olds that are contemplating, Christian young adults that are contemplating an abandonment of the Christian faith. We need to understand what is happening and why this is happening if we are to stem or quell this tide. Let's begin tonight, slide number seven, please, by understanding the biblical directive that we've received from the Lord. It is there in 1 Peter, chapter 3, and verse 15, that the Apostle Peter, now notice as we begin, gives us the qualifying statement by telling us, "In our hearts, let us set Christ apart. Let us sanctify Christ in our hearts." We're not doing this for our own recognition. We're not doing this for our own reputation or for an earthly kingdom. We are doing this for the name's sake and for the glory of God Almighty.
Amen.
I'll take an amen or two out there, just to not make me so nervous. I had the wonderful privilege several different times of tagging along with a guy named Robbie Zacharias. And I'm not going to go into all the, all the situations that came out after his death. But, but, but I had a privilege of going around with him several different times. We were at the University of Texas A&amp;M. And I heard him say this to audiences of people. And he said this to me, he said, "Understand that we are not trying to win an argument. We are trying to win a heart." We're not trying to win an argument, we are trying to win a heart, a heart. And so the Apostle Peter says, "In your hearts, sanctify Christ, set Him apart. And as you do, always be ready to give an apologetic, a defense. Always be ready to give an answer for the reason of the hope that you have. And then when you do it, make sure it is done with an attitude of meekness and compassion, having a good conscience so that no one can stand up and indict you on a moral crime." Are we all out there tonight? So that is what apologetics is. It is a reasoned defense of our Christian worldview. Why is it that we believe what we in fact believe? The young adults of this nation are going through what is a relatively new phenomenon called deconstructionism. How many have heard that term, deconstructionism? It is deliberately deceptive. Let's make no mistake about it. It is unmistakably and intentionally deceptive. And one of the driving motivations for my presence here tonight is found in the fact that I really even can't count the number of how many mothers and how many fathers and grandparents have come to me in the last several years and with tears in their eyes said to me, Billy, "We raised our son or our daughter in church. They never missed Sunday morning service. They were there on Sunday nights. They never missed youth group on Wednesday night. We dedicated them to Christ. They were baptized in water. They never missed youth camp. They never missed youth council. And yet it took the college professor less than three months to completely deconstruct their faith. And now they are claiming there is no God." Can you imagine being a parent and hearing that heartbreaking news from your son or daughter when they come home from their first semester break in their freshman year, only to tell you that they have renounced their faith in Christ and they now disbelieve in the very idea of God? One of the reasons we find this happening is because we are sending our kids into institutions no longer designed for education, but rather they are there and established for the express purpose of indoctrination. They want to change the thinking of the young adults in this, in this nation. It's not accidental. It's not coincidental. It's not happen chance. But this is a deliberate and intentional design to turn America away from its theistic standards. Are we all out there tonight? It is, it is alarming. It is extremely discouraging. And it's also disingenuous. Let me tell you why. I believe that every Christian, each and every one of us in this room, should constantly be tweaking and refining our faith as we delve into the Holy Scriptures. Every day that I look into the Bible, I see something different. I see something new. I understand a fresh perspective. But that is different than deconstructionism because deconstructionism doesn't tell young Christians to tweak their faith. It tells them to remove the Bible from their thinking altogether. And the Bible serves as the bedrock for our faith. Therefore, if you remove the Bible from the process of rethinking and tweaking what it is we believe, then we are left with nothing but secularism, naturalism, and atheistic concepts. All right. That is just my introduction tonight. We're going to talk for a few minutes about deconstruction. Every person, give me slide number 11, if you don't mind, please. The, the, I guess the theme of our time together is the importance of a worldview. And every person here tonight has a worldview. The question is, does that worldview really matter? What is a worldview? Well, very simply said, it is a fundamental understanding of your surroundings. It influences your attitudes, your expectations, and ultimately, your actions. Because your actions are an extension of your belief system. Now, the subjects in one's worldview are absolutely comprehensive. Everybody in this room owns an opinion. Most of the time, our worldview is based on whether or not we want pizza or hamburgers. If we want to drive a Ford, a Chevrolet, or a Dodge. Our worldviews today are whether or not we should get a tattoo. Our worldviews are where do we want to vacation? The mountains or the beach? But ladies and gentlemen, I am convinced that the thinking of the church must move beyond the superficial into the more substantive issues that really engage the culture and ultimately bring change to a people that desperately need an encounter with Almighty God.
That's right.
Here's the problem with most worldviews. Our opinions are frequently, if not most often, based on insufficient information. And yet, when we try to explain truth, we don't validate those, those posits. We don't validate those claims. Using truth in the process, we try to validate claims using emotionalism. Now, I am an Assemblies of God minister. I believe when the Holy Spirit moves upon a person, they're probably not going to act like they've been baptized in formaldehyde. There will probably be some outward expression. But ladies and gentlemen, the validation of Scripture is not found in our exuberance. It is not found in our displays of emotion. It is found in our consistent obedience to the mandates that God gives each and everyone. First, through the Scriptures in general, and then through the voice of the Holy Spirit in particular. Are we all on the same page? Give me the next slide, if you don't mind, please. I don't know what number it is. I'll get to there in just a moment. Back in 1900, let me look at my notes here. In 44, there was a, there was a group established called the UNCF. No? That's right, the UNCF, the United Negro College Fund. And it was established for the purpose of raising up monies, scholarship funds, in order that African-Americans that came from a financially disadvantaged background could actually go to these 31 different higher educational institutions. They could go to colleges and get a, receive a college degree. And it was in 1972, someone came up with this incredibly... someone came up with this incredibly thought-provoking, but also successful slogan. Now, anytime a slogan is remembered, what is that? Fifty-one years later, seventy-two to, that's fifty-one years later. I can do a little bit of math, not much. What's this? He's doing algebra in eighth grade. I couldn't do algebra in twelfth when I was a senior in high school. I'm joking, that was a joke, but anyway. Anytime a slogan is remembered fifty-one years later, that's pretty effective. And what was the slogan that came out for the United Negro College Fund back in nineteen seventy-two? "A mind is a terrible thing to waste." How many have heard that? "A mind is..." You've heard that. "A mind is a terrible thing to waste." I contend, more than that, "A mind is a terrible thing to corrupt." "A mind is a terrible thing to contaminate." So let's go to slide number twelve and the concept of a worldview. Where did this word even come from? Where did it originate? It began during a philosophical movement in Europe called German idealism. And it was basically the blending together of two worldviews. One was rationalism, and the other was empiricism. It was introduced by this guy in the top right-hand corner. His name was Immanuel Kant. Now, the interesting thing about Immanuel Kant was this. Now, get a load of this, okay? Immanuel Kant said it was impossible to know that anything was real. Now, he's going to introduce to us German idealism. He's using rationalism and empiricism. And he tells us, "Believe this German idealism even though it's impossible to know anything is real." Do you understand the contradiction of that statement? How it is self-refuting? Believe something is real even though we don't know anything is real. And this is what our educators are feeding our kids in the universities today. And so he tries to bridge together these two dominant philosophical thoughts in the world at that time. First one was rationalism. What was rationalism? Rationalism basically said, "The only way you can arrive at truth is through logic and through reason." In other words, you use your five senses and the intelligence that you have. And after analyzing all the evidence, you come to a conclusion that seems to be the most fitting or the most logical, rationalism. The problem with rationalism is this. And I'll talk more about this probably tomorrow night or maybe Sunday morning because there are certain questions that atheism cannot hope to answer. The problem with rationalism is this as it regards the Christian worldview. How can you explain? Now, listen to this. How can you understand a Jewish carpenter dying on a Roman cross serving as the means of salvation for the entirety of the world merely through your logic? That's the problem with rationalism. It is faulty in that it cannot explain the deep mysteries of God. And then there's empiricism. Empiricism basically says, "The only way we can arrive at truth is through our senses, by what we see, by what we smell, by what we taste, by what we touch, and by what we hear." The problem with that is you can't see God. You can't smell God. You can't hear God. You can't taste God. You cannot touch God. And yet, we believe that not only does God exist, and not only is God the Almighty, the immortal, the omnipotent, we believe He's also as present as the whisper of His name. He is the God that is out there, Creator and Sustainer of all things. And yet, He is the friend that sticks closer than a brother. These two philosophical thoughts fail when trying to understand Jesus Christ coming in the form of a man dying on a cross so that we might be reconciled back to the God that we have violated through our willful and sustained disobedience. All right, we're still out there, right? So ideas to consider when it comes to a worldview. Give me the next slide. I think it's slide number, I don't know what it is. Give me the next slide. Look at that guy's hair. I love it. Give me the next slide, the next slide, the next slide. We won't go into John Locke. Give me the next slide. Oh, I'm all out. I'm just all over the place with my slides tonight. There was actually a book that was written years ago. It was pretty much viewed as the seminal work when it came to the concept of a worldview. And it was entitled, "Naming the Elephant." It was written by a guy named James Sire. And Sire said in his writing that there were two fundamental truths to every worldview or two fundamental basics to every worldview. The first was assumptions, and the second was questions. Assumptions and questions. Everybody in this room has things they assume. But the question is, those things that we assume, are they in fact true? Are our assumptions true? Now, when we think about assumptions traditionally, we consider assumptions along the lines of what is right, what is wrong? We think about assumptions in regards to morality and in regards to ethics. For instance, matters of sexuality. Now, I understand the culture that I'm speaking to tonight has a different attitude and a different perspective and a different worldview than most of the American culture out there that has absolutely thrown every kind of standard and morality out the window. And anymore, anything that's degenerate and a debauchery and immoral and profane and vile, we embrace and we applaud, which is sad. But that's become the American Constitution that has become the attitude and the personality of the American general public. The problem, though, with assumptions is most of the time, we try to find answers through something called circular reasoning. Circular reasoning, Christians are guilty of it constantly. What they do is they say the Bible is true because the Bible says it is true. That is called circular reasoning. We say that I'm right because I am right. And instead of offering evidence for the conclusion and the belief that we subscribe to, we simply say, "I believe this to be true because I believe this to be true." And it lacks any kind of concrete reasoning. Your kids do it to you all the time. You say to them, "It's time to go to bed." And they say, "Why should I go to bed?" And you say, "Because it's time for bed." That is circular reasoning. Now, when I raised my kids and I said, "It's time to go to bed." And they said, "Why should we go to bed?" I said, "'Cause I'm gonna whip your hide if you don't." And they responded to that so much better. And what's happened in our culture? There's something extremely dangerous that happened in our culture. It invaded our way of thinking really back in the middle part of the nineteen hundreds. It was a philosophy that came from Europe. When the United Nations was formed, the League of Nations was formed, there was an idea that mankind could probably in some way, somehow solve all of his problems. But with the election of Adolf Hitler in nineteen thirty-two and the rise of the Nazi Party and the introduction of the Holocaust and World War II, what happened was the world community became extremely cynical. The world community said, "Man can't really solve his own problems." And so this philosophy from Europe really began to make inroads not only in Europe, but also here in the United States. And that philosophy can be characterized by the one statement, "What may be true for you isn't necessarily true for me. What is right for you may not necessarily be right for me." Take me back one slide, if you don't mind, please. Take me back one more slide. And this is what the philosophy is called. It is called postmodernism. "What may be true for you isn't necessarily true for me. What may be right for you is not necessarily right for me." And that is what our society has been based on for the past seventy years. The problem with postmodernism is that it is absolutely, this is one of the key characterizations of postmodernism, it is absolutely impossible to know anything for certainty. Let me give you an example. Postmodernism will simply say this. And I get this question all the time. There's no such thing as absolute truth. There's no such thing as truth. I get Christians send to me all the time. They say, "What do I say when somebody tells me there's no such thing as truth?" Now, I'm not giving you false advertisement here. If somebody says to you, "There's no such thing as truth," please don't say, "Well, Jesus said in St. John fourteen and six, 'I am the way, I am the truth, and I am the life.'" Don't do that. Please, don't do that. Because the moment you introduce Jesus into a conversation with an atheist, you've just lost your audience. You get to Jesus, yes, ultimately. But you have to establish a basis first for truth. And literally, when somebody says, "There's no such thing as truth," you can refute that, I'm telling you, in less than two seconds. No finger of speech here, no colloquialism. You can refute the claim, "There's no such thing as truth," in less than two seconds. Somebody says, "There's no such thing as truth." You say, "Is that true?" They've just made a truth claim. And if they say, "There's no such thing as truth," then they've just contradicted themselves. It's a self-refuting claim. Just always turn the claim back on itself. There are no such thing as absolutes. What do you say? Are you absolutely, absolutely sure? They have just contradicted themselves. Now, this guy up here, slide number sixteen, is a guy by the name of Harold Pinter. Nobel Prize winner in two thousand and five. It goes to prove that you can win the Nobel Prize and not necessarily be that smart. Now, when Pastor introduced me tonight, I came on the platform, and I was going one of two directions. I was gonna either talk about the holes in my socks or tell you that he forgot to tell you that I won the Nobel Prize back in two thousand and eighteen. I really didn't. Don't look at me like that. All right, all right. So here we go. This guy's Harold Pinter, Nobel Prize winner, brilliantly stupid. This is what he says, slide number seventeen. Now, watch this, slide number seventeen. "There are no hard distinctions between what is right, I'm sorry, what is real and what is unreal, between what is true and what is false. A thing is not necessarily either true or false. It can be both true and false." Now, these are the minds who are educating our children. We wonder why our nation is in the condition that it's in. They say it's impossible to know what is true. You see, postmodernism refuses to make a distinction between matters of truth, I'm sorry, matters of opinion and things that are true. Let me try to say it another way if I can, okay? I won't speak on it this weekend, I promise, and everybody will breathe a collective sigh of relief. But we can't make judgments about right and wrong. It's impossible to make a distinction between what is right and what is wrong if you can't make a distinction between what is this and what is that. Let me explain what I mean by that, okay? We got these controversies all over the United States regarding boys using girls' bathrooms. So long as the boy says, "I am a girl," he is now given access to a girl's bathroom. Now, we sit back and at school board meetings and city council meetings, we sit there and we debate whether or not boys should be allowed to use girls' bathrooms because we can't make the distinction between this and that. We call this that and that this. We call a boy a girl and a girl a boy. Therefore, if we don't understand the difference between the two, how can we ever understand whether it's right or wrong for them to be given access into such a facility? And when you begin to redefine truth statements and everything becomes subject to your opinion, you've lost the basis for all order. And with the absence of order is introduced the absence of morality. And there's where we are, guys, in our country. Now, let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. Plato, you heard me mention Plato a few minutes ago. Slide number eighteen, I think it is. Maybe it is, I don't know. Is that slide eighteen? Yeah, I'm all over the place. That's just par for the course. And so Plato made this statement one time. He said, "Beauty is in the eye of the beholder." Okay, "Beauty is in the eye of the beholder." Now, is that, now watch this. Is that a truth statement or is that an opinion? And some are saying, "Yeah, truth, opinion, truth, opinion." I contend that it's a truth claim. But the exercising of that right is done in the form of an opinion. Why is that important? I have listened to podcast after podcast. I have listened to and watched with my own eyeballs and heard with my own ears conversations between college students regarding violent crime against women. Let me give you an example. In this particular forum that I'm making reference to tonight, the statement was made, "I cannot say with any absolute surety or clarity that rape is always wrong." You see, the moment you introduce into a statement a word that is an absolute, never, maybe, I'm sorry, never, only, no, the postmodernist rejects that as truth. Therefore, when a postmodernist says, "I cannot say with certainty that rape is always wrong," what he's insinuating is, because of the word always, there will be times that in fact rape is permissible. What is the point that I'm making? When you lose your moral clarity, you lose your future. And our kids are being told all things are subjective based on what they think about a situation. Opinion is sovereign, truth is expendable. Now, how does that harm the Christian worldview? Well, it's very simple. Acts, chapter four and verse twelve. Give me slide number nineteen. Jesus didn't say, "Subjectively, if you choose Me, great. If you don't choose Me, no problem. I'll slide you in the back door of heaven." He said, "There's one name under heaven. Give it among mankind whereby we must be saved." That's an absolute statement. You know St. John fourteen and six. I just cited that passage a moment ago. "I am the way, I am the truth, I am the life. No man comes to the Father except by Me." Those are truth claims. Those are truth claims. Give me slide number twenty, if you don't mind, please. This guy's name is Alvin Toffler. He's passed away now, but he was one of the most brilliant scientists of his time. He was decades in front of most people when it came to the subject of AI and cloning and other types of intelligence. But this is what he said. Give me slide number twenty-one. "Every person has in their mind a mental model of the world, a subjective representation of external reality. A subjective representation of external reality." Back to the subject of violating a woman. The man can stand up and say, "Well, I'm a sadist." The victim can stand up and say, "I'm a masochist." Therefore, these things are permissible. Who is to say that the opinion of this group should supersede the opinion of that person? I don't really want to get into much of this tonight. It's just something, let me just share it with you. It's called utilitarianism. It's a philosophy that says we make decisions about right and wrong based on the greater good to the people. That's not, let me try to explain it better than that. Let me give it to you through an analogy. I'm healthy. I walk into a church, I walk into a hospital to visit somebody. In that hospital, there are four people in ICU. Someone that needs a heart transplant, someone that needs a kidney transplant, someone that needs a liver transplant, someone that needs a lung transplant. And I walk into the hospital, and the hospital administration says, "Wait a minute, that guy is healthy. Let's put him on the gurney, wheel him into surgery and remove his internal organs because taking his heart, his lungs, his kidney, and his liver, we can save four different lives. We're gonna give up one life for the sake of saving four lives." That is utilitarianism. Dangerous. It is lethal. But it's the mindset, that is becoming again, the mindset that we have adopted here in America. Simply said, postmodernism subordinates truth to identity and identity rules the day. And understand something, when judgments of truth are based on individualism, there's a total loss of discernment. All right. Why, why, why am I here? I've given you some reasons why I'm here. Let me give you a personal reason. Slide number 23. This is my 10-year-old grandson, Judah. Three years ago, I received a phone call from my daughter. She lives just outside of Fort Worth, Texas, Bible Belt America. She says, "Papa, I want to talk to you for just a moment." I said, "Go on ahead." And she said, "I, Papa, I need you to tell me something." Judah came home from school today, seven years of age, and she said, uh, they, they were teaching him gender fluidity. She said, "What is gender fluidity?" When I told her, she was at the administrator's office the next morning. Why are we teaching children, seven years of age, anything about sexuality? When at seven years of age, they should be learning reading, writing and arithmetic. It is because the war of ideas starts in the elementary school. So now we have drag queens reading to our children in kindergarten during reading hour. And I tell this to people everywhere I go. It's my altar call. It's, it's the altar call. I mean, we can come to the altar and we can pray and say, "God changed this nation." But until we start running for city council, running for the school board. I preached for a guy up in, up in Indianapolis, Indiana, and he's running for the lieutenant governorship in that state. He is getting out there and making a difference on the front lines because we can sit here and we can, we, we can just all night long theorize on how things should change. But until we actually put action to our prayers, nothing is going to change. When my little, my little grandson comes and says, "They're teaching gender fluidity." You've got, I'm not the most sanctified Christian in the world. That makes me angry. That bothers me deeply and it stirs me to action. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, do not, do not give me slide number 25. Give me slide 24. Do not give me slide 25. There's kids here tonight. Again, I'm not, I'm not really spiritual. I hate this person. I know, I know, I know. You understand what I'm saying. Dr. Sid Gallagher advertises on TikTok targeting an audience of nine through 13-year-old girls. Now, we're not, I'm not gonna make, make sure you do not bring up the next slide because there's kids in here. The next slide, don't bring it up. The next slide has got, I think, three or four different pictures of girls nine, 10, 11 and 12 years of age that have had complete mastectomies. Okay? That's the fight that we're engaged in. And when you've got a guy down in Washington DC advocating that children make these kind, you, you do know there's federal laws on the book now, federal laws, that you've gotta be, not state law, but federal law. You've gotta be 21 years old before you can go buy a pack of cigarettes. You gotta be 21 years old before you can go buy alcohol. I think you've gotta be 18 years old before you can get a tattoo. But what is it that we allow kids nine, 10 and 11 years old to make decisions about mutilating their bodies? And parents, when they stand up to defend their rights as a parent, are threatened by the state with the removal of their child from that home. That's what California is fighting with right now. I think it's AB 157. Guys, this thing's insane. We need moral clarity in America. That's why our worldview matters. That's why our worldview matters. All right, um, give me slide 26. Don't you love this one? If you can't choose between what is this and what is that, you'll never know the difference between what is right and wrong. Does anybody know what this picture is about? Raise your hand if you do, okay? The, the, the man on the right stands six foot, I think, two inches tall. His name is William Thomas. He ranked 462nd as an NCAA male swimmer who in his senior year decided to swim as a female. And this guy's got an issue and I'm not gonna even, I won't bring up the, the issue here tonight because of the mixed audience. And of course, you know who Riley Gaines is. And Riley Gaines and William Thomas, they tied one particular night and the NCAA decided to give him the trophy instead of her. And they said, "We'll send you the trophy in the mail." All right. Does your worldview matter? I happen to believe that it does. I happen to believe this man on the left had an irrefutable and undeniable advantage. And when I think of, give me the next slide, please, if you don't mind. Next slide, I think it's the next slide. Okay, I'm gonna give you a wild guess who that is. I'm gonna give you one guess to tell me who that is. Good guess, it's Riley Gaines. Okay? Now, my question is this. This young girl, from the time she could walk, was in the swimming pool first thing in the morning, last thing at night, even before school, for the purpose of being the absolute best competitor she could possibly be in NCAA female swimming. But because we in America cannot make a distinction between what is this and what is that, therefore, we're not able to make a distinction between what is right and what is wrong, people like her are being mistreated and on the short end of what is justice. That's why our worldview matters. There's a distinction between truth and perspective. I think about the Europeans when they braved the lashing waves of the Atlantic Ocean to come to this new world. When they arrived, the search had ended. They found the new world, but upon their arrival, they noticed that there were Native Americans here. And to those Native Americans, there was nothing new about the world that the pilgrims had landed on. There's a difference between perspective and truth. To one, it was the new world. And to the other set, it was just home. It's all they had ever known. Now, as you've noticed, I haven't used the Bible but one time, I think. So I'm going to speak for just a few moments tonight. I realize my time is running out on establishing a worldview. How is it done? When I think of Jesus, I think of someone who rejected, who was rejected by thousands and thousands of critics. And yet those thousands of critics that rejected him never accused him one time of not knowing who in fact he was. Stay with me. In St. John chapter 8, please give me the next slide. Jesus is going to give us the criteria for establishing a biblical worldview. He makes the statement in St. John chapter 8 and verse 12. "I am the light of the world. He that follows me shall not walk in darkness, but have the light of life." Then it goes on in verse number 14 and says, "Even if I bear witness of myself, my witness is true. I know where I came from and I know where I'm going." Notice that in these two verses, Christ makes a triadic claim. He says, "I know where I came from, I know where I'm going, and because of those two truths, I know who I am." "I know where I came from, I know where I'm going, therefore, I must, I know who I am." If you want to know who you are, you must know where you came from and you must understand where you are going. Those are the three fundamentals Christ gives us concerning the Christian worldview. "I know where I came from, I know where I'm going, therefore, I know who I am." Again, because of the constraints of time, I won't get into naturalism and eastern philosophy and, and all the other isms of the world. But in my mind, it's Christianity and Christianity alone that explains what something is created for. Let me give you an example. It may be the fate of a rusty hammer to end up in the city garbage dump. It may be the fate of a rusty hammer to be discarded into a trash can. But it's not the purpose of that hammer. That hammer was created to drive nails. Finding our purpose can only be done by understanding where we came from, our origin, understanding our destiny, the presence of God in heaven, so that we can have a certainty on earth of who we are and whose we are. And it gives us moral clarity and it gives us certainty of purpose. All right. I'm almost done, I promise, I'm almost done. Give me slide number 31. I love this guy, C.S. Lewis. And, and if we could just learn this in the church. He said, "I believe in Christianity as I believe in the sun, not because I see the sun, but because by the sun I see everything else." And incidentally, this guy was a staunch atheist. I'm in a rabid atheist. And he was brought to Christ during his years studying at Cambridge University. And he had have conversations with one of his dorm mates at night after class. Does anyone know who his, his dorm mate was that led him to Christ? Give it to the man in the back. J.R.R. Tolkien, the Lord of the Rings, won C.S. Lewis, The Chronicles of Narnia, to Christ. And of course, C.S. Lewis became one of the greatest defenders, one of the greatest apologists of the Christian faith, of the Christian faith has ever had. All right. Criteria. Does it have empirical adequacy? Can it be verified? Is there proof available for us that the Christian worldview is in fact credible? These are just, these are all 60-minute presentations within themselves. Is there logical consistency? Is it reasonable? Biblical faith, biblical faith. You know, biblical faith is completely misrepresented, totally. Christians are all the time mocked for their faith as being just a blind leap in the dark. Biblical faith is just not taking a shot in the dark and jumping into the deep end, whether you can swim or not. Biblical faith is exercising trust in empirical and historical evidence that leads to a logical or reasonable conclusion. I, I don't just believe that Jesus is the Savior because of Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. I, I, they provide me enough textual evidence that Jesus is who he said he was. But if that doesn't give you enough confidence, go outside of the biblical history and go into the writings of, of a Josephus or a Tacitus, a Roman or a Greek historian that are decisively anti-Christian and yet confirm that Christ rose from the dead, even though they call it a superstition. There's enough proof out there that Jesus is who he said he was without ever invoking the writings of the New Testament. Most people don't know that. And is it spiritually, experientially relevant? In other words, doesn't work in my life. Now, with all of that said, with everything that I said tonight, let, let me just hit the brakes and go another direction. We're not trying to win an argument, we're trying to win a heart. And I study all kinds of things, philosophy and math and science and the contingency argument and the cosmological argument and the ontological argument and on and on and on and on it goes. I was at a church on Sunday night and for two hours, two hours, they just pelted me with all kinds of questions. But at the end of the day, this is not an intellectual answer. Our intellect can lead us to the truth, but it cannot deliver us to the truth. The truth is Christ and Christ is a person. And the only way I will ever know truth is by knowing Him. There was a British evangelist years ago by the name of Gipsy Smith. And give me slide number 34. I love what he said. He said, "There are five Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John and the Christian. And most people will never read the first four." The Apostle Paul said that you are living epistles read before all men. I can speak to college students from here till the rapture. But I'll never convince someone academically unless the Holy Spirit convinces them internally. One last quote comes from a guy by the name of G.K. Chesterton. I love Chesterton. He said, "The Christian ideal has not been tried and found wanting. It's been found difficult and left untried." If you don't mind, please, give me the next slide. That's not Gipsy Smith, that's Leah Thomas. Don't you love that? There it is. "The Christian ideal has not been tried and found wanting. It's been found difficult and left untried." I don't want to be guilty of this. When men read me, I want them to read Christ. I want them to see Christ. You know, that first night I was invited by ICPF to come and speak. Again, I think it was the fall of 2020. I told the students that were there, it was a Zoom call. I told the students, I said, "Guys, if you've got any questions." And I gave them my email address. In fact, you can just throw up my email address to the next slide, if you don't mind, please. And I thought, "Well, I might field three or four questions, four or five questions." Maybe. It, it probably took me 45 minutes to get home, I don't know. But by the time I got back, there were 30 or 40 questions in my email inbox. And within 48 hours, I had 70 different questions from those students because of the curiosity. I'm sure it was heightened because we were in COVID at the time. But questions about Christianity, questions that I can answer intellectually. But until men can read Christ in me, all of my intellect is nothing. Jesus, let them see you living through me. That's why our worldview truly matters. All right, Pastor Sid fielded some questions. And so if you have questions tonight, go on ahead and fire them my direction. Now, no, no, don't shout me down here. Not everybody at one time. Not everybody at one time. My man Timothy, straight A Timothy. Anybody have a question? Yes, somebody in the back. Thank you for breaking that awkward silence.
Yeah, so you were, you were stating that, you know, it's more than intellect. You can probably lead them to Christ or to the truth. I was just kind of curious, what kind of topics do you usually speak at colleges and what kind of response do you get?
It depends on the audience. Much of the time I will consult with a leader beforehand so I can specifically speak to what they believe is most relevant at the time. Obviously, the reactions are mixed strangely. Strangely enough, I find a lot of receptivity from those that don't share my Christian worldview. I think a lot of it has to do with, if people know that you're sincere and you truly and genuinely care about them, they're more likely to engage these tough conversations, these difficult subjects, because these are tough subjects. I've often said this and I believe it to be true. If I wasn't born in the United States of America, if I was born in a Muslim world, I would likely be of the Muslim faith, simply because we are what we know and we are what we've been raised. And it takes a real work over the Holy Spirit to bring somebody from their religious traditional background into a brand-new religious concept and paradigm. So to answer your question, it depends on what the audience wants, what the leadership of the audience wants to hear. That's primarily the direction I get. You know, again, for instance, last Sunday night, the pastor, he just threw, he shed, he threw me to the lions because it was just an open forum and I had to be prepared to speak about just about everything and anything. And here's the interesting thing, when I made the decision to go back on the road three or four years ago, I realized how woefully inadequate I was as far as my education, as far as my intellect. And so at forty-nine years of age, I went back to school. And I'm almost finished with my master's degree in apologetics. And I study morning, noon, and night because I want to be as prepared as I can possibly, I want to be as good as I can be for those that I come into contact with because this is a privilege, this is an honor. And it's interesting, I told pastor, you know, I pastored for seventeen years, hated absolutely every minute of it, hated it only because I wasn't called to do it. Now that I'm out traveling and speaking to people that do not believe as I believe, doing evangelism, doing missionary work, I mean, I eat this stuff, I sleep this stuff, I actually dream this stuff. And it's just my passion. So I would solicit you guys to pray for me, that God helps me and gives me the right answers, because my greatest fear is giving somebody the wrong answer and in the process misrepresenting Christ. Good question though, thank you, I appreciate that. What's your name?
Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Good question, Kevin.
I actually have one more.
Sure.
So what kind of resources do you recommend for people venturing into apologetics?
Well, once again, it's going to go back to where are you, what level of education do you have, what is your interest in apologetics? Do you want to come from a philosophical standpoint? Do you want to come from a more teleological standpoint? Teleological is, it speaks about fine design. The earth has been created with precision. There are so many variables, so many, let me change that, there were so many constants that right now work in conjunction with one another that should, like the strong nuclear field or the weak nuclear field. Should any of those constants become disharmonious or step out of their intended duty, the entire universe would cease to exist, such as the speed of light. You know, the universe is expanding at a rate of one hundred and eighty-six thousand miles per second. If that weren't a constant, if that were not true, the universe could not exist. So those are the kinds of things, if you're interested in science, fine tuning, there's certain guys out there that I would read behind. There's a Catholic priest from the fourteen hundreds by the name of Thomas Aquinas, great place to start. He came up with the five rules of logic, not the five rules of logic, but, oh, I can't remember, five, I'll have to get back to you, five something of Aquinas, if you want to talk about logic. Man, I would start with Aristotle. If you want to talk contemporary, just basic stuff, there's a guy in California, his name is Greg Kocal, Stan Therese, awesome stuff. The more weighty stuff, contingency, the Kalam cosmological argument, which is, all things that exist have, all things that exist must have a cause, the earth has a cause, therefore we make those conclusions. I would go to William Lane Craig on that. There's a guy by the name of Frank Turek. Frank Turek is outstanding. Probably taking the more complex aspects of apologetics and just breaking them down into layman's terms that are understandable, I'd go with a guy by the name of J. Warner Wallace. He's actually a cold case detective that worked for the Los Angeles County Police Department. And he comes from, he was an atheist, a staunch and hardened atheist, and used his expertise in cold case cracking, cold case homicides, to go and research the crucifixion, resurrection of Jesus Christ, and that's how he came to faith. So I'd be glad to give you a list of those names, write them down, but Frank Turek, Greg Kocal, J. Warner Wallace, William Lane Craig, those are four that you could start with. These guys are exceptional, they're outstanding.
So I want to ask you a question.
Oh, no.
Oh, very simple. So you mentioned about that nineteen to twenty-nine where we lose almost seventy-five percent, sorry, eighteen to twenty-nine, we lose seventy-five percent of the kids are Christians. As a church, what should we do to prevent that from happening?
Great question. I, first of all, I think one of the reasons our kids are leaving the faith is because they do not have a systematic theology. Most of the kids come to church and they are given biblical principles, biblical truths that ride on the back of Bible stories. But there's a difference between knowing a biblical truth and actually being able systematically to theologically work through what it is that they believe. Okay, we believe that we're sinners, we believe that Jesus died on the cross, but we need to understand what that means. We need to understand the implications of what that means. And again, if, when I say systematic, we've got to be able to move from point A to point B. We've got to move all the way from Genesis to Revelation and understand that even though there are sixty-six books, there's still one story. And each one of those stories has a unique perspective and a unique aspect and a new, and a unique doctrine to teach us. And until we learn the doctrine, until we understand theology and understand it systematically, I mean, it's like having a pocket full of money. You know, I can hand somebody ten dollars, but if I've got ten dollars in the front pocket, of the ten dollars, I've got two in the front pocket, two in the left front pocket, three in the back right pocket, and two in the back left pocket, it doesn't do me any good. It needs to be organized, it needs to be structured. And I think that's one of the reasons why our kids are falling by the way. But also number two, we have substituted the presence of a holy God, we have substituted an experience with the Almighty, an encounter with the Holy Ghost for superficial, unnecessary entertainment and games. And until we get back to a relationship with, I see it in youth ministry all the time and it makes me want to vomit, to be honest with you. And I know that's a strong statement. We're trying to entertain our kids into church. Our kids are, you understand, Barna came out with a poll recently, it said the church in America has never been so biblically illiterate. I'm going to go, I'm going to tell you something, you're going to say, "Oh, man, I'm not even sure I believe this." This is absolutely true. I referenced it and I cross-referenced it. There was a poll taken not long ago among evangelical Christians, and in that poll several questions were asked. And when I read the answer, I just thought, they're pulling my chain, this is not true. And then again, I cross-referenced it and found it to be true. One of the questions was, who was married to Noah? Okay? And the report, the study said, I think it was sixteen or seventeen percent said that Joan of Arc was married to Noah. That's not a joke. It's hysterical, but it's not, it's pathetic. In that same study, the question was asked, who preached the Sermon on the Mount? I think eighteen or nineteen percent said Billy Graham. So again, biblical illiteracy, a lack of systematic theology, a lack of systematic understanding of what the scriptures say, and a lack of experience with God. You know, I go to churches all the time. This is just, this is just me. The lights are off, it's pitch black, it looks like a nightclub. I mean, strobe lights are flashing, smoke bombs are billowing. We have substituted entertainment and performance for a divine encounter with God. And only the divine encounter with God is going to keep our kids. End of the day, end of the day, end of story.
So I have a question, like you talked about, we know that, we're told that we need to defend, defend our faith. And then we also know that unless Holy Spirit works, nobody is going to accept God.
Right.
And also, the thing is, do we need to, or in other ways, why is biblical knowledge or studying the entirety of the Bible not enough? And we need to have exterior knowledge because God can give us all the revelation at every time to defend and stuff like that. Why is, why is that we have to look for resources outside of the Bible to defend our faith? And like, another question like related to this is, when you said seventy-five percent of the kids leave the church, is it, what do you think is more important in our generation? Is it like defending our own faith or like convincing atheists and others to bring them to God?
Yeah. Let me add, if I understand your second question, let me answer that first. One of the problems I see is that number one, our churches have adopted what's called an attractional model. We try to attract people to the church by having programs, by having, by having all kinds of things that will entice and allure somebody into a church. I believe that the biblical model is missional, we go and get them. And we do that through relationships. We sit down one-on-one with a person, we have contact, we develop friendships, we allow them to explore their faith, we let them have a form of freedom where they're not feeling judged or condemned because there's a disagreement of ideas. As far as learning outside the scriptures, I'll give you an example of what happened to me last week, as a matter of fact. I was doing some reading about the Christian movement into the Scandinavian countries, okay? Norway, what is it, Norway, Sweden, Finland, Denmark, Iceland. And I was reading about what happened when the Vikings began to move southward into Europe. And as they were conquering, these are barbaric, bloodthirsty people, and as they were conquering Europe, the European Christians were converting them. And there was a great move of God among the Vikings, and Vikings were getting saved. Now, that seems like it's a totally insignificant or immaterial subject. I was sitting at breakfast and there was a lady waiting on me, and a young girl, young girl waiting on me, and she had tattoos on her hand, and they were cheap tattoos. And so the man that I was with, the pastor that I was with, he said, "What are those tattoos?" I said, "Well, I said something about the tattoos." And then the pastor said, "What are those tattoos?" And she said, "Oh, these tattoos have to do with my background, I come from a background of Vikings." The moment she said that, I pounced on it. And I said, "You know, I was just doing some study the other day about the Vikings and the Scandinavian people and how when they came down to Europe and began to plunder all of the countryside, the Christians rose up and began to share the love of Jesus with them." Long story short, that waitress and I stood there in the middle of the restaurant, tears pouring down her face, and we prayed together. Now, it's, I can't tell you specifically what to read outside of scripture, but I believe that God is big enough to direct you to read what you're going to need to read for the divine encounter, He's going to bring your direction. And when it comes to sharing the faith with people, the faith with people, I think that's the easiest thing to do. I mean, there's doors, doors open constantly. And if you learn how to share your faith, you can pounce on just about anything, like I did with the Viking girl. And let me say this, okay? Best thing we can do is turn the television set off. Now, this is, this is Billy theology here. The best thing we can do is stop lolling our brains into a pudding of mush. Read, develop, learn, take college classes. College is so accessible now. And if we, if we avail ourselves to the resources that are out there, again, I believe that God is big enough, He'll establish your steps to meet the right person that you need to meet. Because yes, most of the time, the conversations that we're having with an increasingly secular audience are going to need us to have at least a modicum of information about what interests them. You know, I mean, I grew up with a sports fan addict, so I knew about, a lot about sports, so I would just segue off sports. You know, the Apostle Paul uses the analogy of running a race. I did a video on my YouTube channel, I was out in Indianapolis, and I did a video right in front of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, and how Paul said, "When you run a race, you got to prepare for that race." And that stupid video got more, more hits than any video I've ever done. So it's just, it's just a matter of where you are and being receptive to the fact that, man, these doors are wide open and being attuned to the fact that, all right, I can walk through that door now. I hope that answers your question. You look confused, pastor.
I had one question.
Yes, there you are, the drummer.
So very basic question, since you mentioned like you interact with many students and atheists, so this idea has always been there, like when we interact with atheists, they always try to bring up that theory of evolution. But nowadays, in science and technology, everything has advanced and people are now more like, they are aware about, there is an intelligent design behind man and the universe, so.
Yeah. I mean, Hawking's even, even came back and said, "It seems like this thing's fine designed, finely tuned."
Yeah. So in your case where you interact, all the questions which you receive, do they still doubt like or ask, are their questions more pointed towards existence of God or what type of questions do they ask?
The questions are, the indoctrination is so, I think, in the face of irrefutable evidence, to the contrary, there is, again, it's an intellectual dishonesty that's coming from academia. And these kids are still being told that evolution is not the, we'll talk about it maybe tomorrow night or Sunday morning. I'll probably talk about abiogenesis and biogenesis, for instance. Y'all know what, do you know what biogenesis is, abiogenesis or not? Okay, I'll talk about it Sunday morning. And just briefly, biogenesis says that life comes from life, okay? Life comes from life, abiogenesis, that life comes from non-life. I went into a bunch of textbooks recently doing my research, and it described biogenesis as a theory. Abiogenesis was not described as a theory. And they're going into the literal, literally, the primordial pool of ooze and trying to explain that and justify evolution through that, even though it's a flawed theory. I think at the end of the day, this is more than just academic, I think it's spiritual. You know, the Bible says, "The fool hath said," Psalm fourteen, "the fool hath said in his heart, 'There is no God.'" When you read that in the original Hebrew, it doesn't really mean, "The fool hath said in his heart, yeah, there's no God." It really means, "The fool hath said in his heart, 'No God, no to God.'" It's not a denial of God's existence, it's a denial of His lordship in a person's life. And I think that's where we are in the United States because you have got so many scientists that are moving from atheism into agnosticism, and so many that are moving from agnosticism into deism, and some from deism even now into theism. And it's just because of the evidence, as you've mentioned, that's coming forward. You know, they said the universe was eternal. Well, that's been completely disproven. And so science has had to rethink its definitions. Again, I'll talk about that. You know, the idea that something came from nothing. Oh, I'm going too long, I'm sorry. All right. So I'll have more to say about that, I promise, if you come back. All right, I guess I've fielded all the questions I am supposed to field. Is that it?
Tomorrow we will have more time.
Okay, all right.
Let's all close our eyes. We heard a lot of things here tonight. And let's take a moment to pray for a generation which is getting confused and which is getting lost. This evening, let's come back and say, "Lord, protect me." And you know, when we look in the Bible, Apostle Paul writes to Timothy that there will be terrible times, people will be lovers of themselves, boastful, disobedient to parents. There are many things mentioned. Let's pray that God will help us to navigate the challenges. Let's pray that God will help us to navigate the challenges of the current generation, not just for ourselves, but also to save many from destruction. Let's pray. Gracious and holy Father, we are so thankful to you tonight. Lord, there is a phrase mentioned about the disciples who are going to Emma's after your resurrection, and they were talking, and they were in a kind of debate about what has happened, and Jesus, you joined them. And in the end, they make a statement, "When he was talking to us, our hearts were burning." Tonight, Lord, as we were listening, our hearts were burning deep inside of many things which is happening around us. We pray, God, that you will help us. We pray for our young generation. Give them faith to stand strong. In the midst of this confusion, deconstructionism which is going around, we pray that you will keep our minds, our hearts dedicated and devoted to you so that we will be able to move forward. Thank you for using your servant. Thank you for everyone who came here tonight. We pray for everyone who watched us online, too. As we come back tomorrow night, be with us, help us. Until then, help us to meditate on your word and think about what you have done for us. The great works of our God, the creation proclaims the greatness of you, my Lord. Help us. And we pray that you will give us all a safe journey tonight back home, give us good rest tonight so that tomorrow morning we'll be able to get up with strength. Pray for everyone who could not come here, be with them wherever they are, and meet them at their point of need. Thank you once again for your servant. Continue to use him in this generation. We believe that you have anointed him and you have brought him up as a prophet to the current generation to speak truth in the midst of all this confusion. So sharpen him as an instrument in your hands, as a weapon in your hands, so that he will impact many, many people for your glory. Keep his family safe. Thank you for everything, Lord. In Jesus' most precious name we pray. Amen. Now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, love the Father and fellowship of the Holy Spirit, be with us all from now and forever. Amen. God bless you all, and tomorrow evening, again, we will start at seven. God bless you.